Good evening, everyone. Thanks for those of you joining us in person. I'm sure we have some folks on Zoom. I would like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order. The annual tour of schools with the town boards and RTM committees will be held on Saturday, March 18th, beginning at 8:30 a.m. at Middlesex Middle School. The next regular Board of Education meeting is on Tuesday, March 28th at 7:30 p.m. in the board meeting room. So, thank you. Good evening, everyone. My comments will be brief. I just want to thank the Board of Finance. We presented the Board of Education budget to the Board of Finance, I guess, a little over a week or so ago. Along with First Selectman Monica McNally presented the town budget. So I want to thank the Board of Finance. I also want to thank the RTM Subcommittee's Education and RTM Subcommittee F and B Finance and Budget. Thank you for working with us. We'll continue to work with you as we continue to go through this process. You'll see on the agenda also toward the end of the meeting, there's a topic. We want to start a conversation around the budget process. And we've all had some ideas as we've been through this budget process, and some of us have been on the the board for a while. So I think there's a way to kind of look at it, look at the schedule, look at when people get involved. I think the important thing to look at is the time and energy that people spend, especially the commitment of the superintendent and the cabinet around the budget process and answering questions. I think we have to look at the superintendent budget and the work that's done on that budget, and then the work that's then done from a board perspective in conjunction with information from the public and the subcommittees and the partnerships we have with the other folks out there. So I look forward to that conversation. We'll really direct that toward John Seeny and the Finance Committee to kind of take that under advisement and and work through some budget process ideas and schedule ideas, and then have a full board conversation too, and include our our partners. So I'd also like to thank, I know it was standing room only last night, but Joanna and CDSP, thank you for speaking on behalf of the budget last night at the public hearing. I think weather and everything else prevailed, but thank you for attending. Unfortunately, I couldn't make it. I think the chairman of the Board of Finance didn't even make it, right? From a trained perspective, but thank you. So with that, we will move on to public comment. Michelle?
Good evening. If anyone in person or online would like to participate, please wait for the chair to call you, or if you're online, use the raised hand option. You will have up to three minutes to comment. Please state your name and address for the record. Should we start in person?
Sure. Anyone in the audience? We could. Thank you. Anyone on Zoom?
There are no raised hands.
All right, good. Public comment at the end. We'll move on. Dr. Adley, Superintendent's Report.
Good evening, everybody. Happy St. Patrick's Day for Friday, and we will hopefully hear the bank paper around town. But 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 March has, but there's another, but there's another wee reason for March. March is also Board Appreciation Month of Boards of Education, and there's a wee message here for you, actually from a Connecticut native.
Thank you. I'm happy to join you today. I'll be virtually, just like school, we know there's no substitute for being with my person. While I can't be in Connecticut today, I'm so thankful to have a moment with you now to celebrate Board of Education Appreciation Month. Personally, thank you and acknowledge how hard we are all working for the children of Connecticut. I want to thank Patrice, Lisa, the whole team at CAE for the great work you do. You know, Kate has really stepped up these last several years, and I've been fortunate to be able to work more closely with Kate. Thank you, Kate. Thank you all, Boards of Education. You know, what a time we've been leading. You've done a great job. We see that board members are volunteers, but that could be part of the reality. Over the past few years, you've taken on head fire. You've faced threats, bullying, protests. You stay in the arena. You wear many hats and roll up your sleeves to get to work for our schools and for our students. From elevating critical issues like learning recovery and to house support, ensuring that parents and communities get to have more say in their child's learning. Your efforts in and for your communities make all the difference. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
So I tried to get, I tried to get him to make an appearance on Zoom. If his schedule had worked, he would have done it for us. But anyway, thank you, Miguel. I appreciate that. I want to thank, congratulate our basketball unified team this week. I think on Monday they went to Firfield and they competed and had a great time, and everyone was a winner at Firfield, so congratulations. Thank you to the staff who work with our children and to our our students for participating. Since last time we spoke, the Boys Squash Team won the Fur West Conference. The Girls Hockey Team won the SEIC and the State Championship. The Boys Hockey Team won the FCIC, and the Girls Indoor Track Team were our Eastern Division Champions. So congratulations to all our teams. Ox Ridge Lunches commenced today, hot lunches. Somebody's maybe not know, there weren't hot lunches up to this point, I don't know, but they, this is the day we started. We were able to get the van, and we're kicking off after the remainder of the school year. So thank you for Chartwells. We had some problems with securing registrations and vans and so on, but thank you to the parents, actually, for hanging in there and and for our students, too. So today's a hot day over at Ox Ridge. Thank you. Prior March 1st, we had a successful fifth grade student with IEPs in five, five or four, preparing to go to the middle school, and that was very well received over at Middlesex and Middle Schools. It's nice for the parents who participated in that. As also for our parents today for conferences and the afternoon tomorrow and the evening tomorrow. We do have an evening opportunity and then one on Friday. March 17th is a professional learning community state at the high school, so that's a delayed opening. Tour of the schools is March 18th. If you would like to accompany us, and we will be starting over at the middle school at 8:30. That agenda is posted, and it will also be videotaped and posted, too. So if you can't get out on Saturday, you'll have an opportunity to to review it. Congratulations to our robotics team, and I want to thank the the staff because staff for their Friday night, Saturday all day, Sunday all day at Waterbury. We're following online their performance. They won the first three matches, and they get paired up with different teams. So they did very well throughout the day. They ended up winning the Rooty All-Star Award, so congratulations to them. I also want to congratulate the Programming Club, who competed in the Cyber Quest at Sikorsky in Stratford on Saturday, March 4th. Our team took third place. That's a cloud-based competition that includes problems created by Lockheed Martin Cyber Security Engineers, so I can only imagine the technical aspect of that, so and the talent there. Dr. Alicia Dad, our Doctor of Mental Health starts on Monday. We will have an opportunity for Alicia to reach out to the parents late April, stroke early May, but hopefully late April to facilitate discussions at the various schools. Our Director of Security, those meetings will be going forward with the PTO, so they're they're certainly being scheduled just at the moment. I like, I let, I just want to talk about the newsies. I think you've you've got to be updated for us there. And our Board Committee meetings are curriculum March 16th, the Finance the 23rd. We will have discussions about the communications on the 24th, whether that's up and running or not, and the policy meeting on March 31st.
Thank you, Dr. Adley. So I will move quickly over to you. Good to see you this evening.
Good to see you, too. Unfortunately, John's at a rehearsal, but he would want me to remind everyone to buy their tickets for newsies if they haven't already. Opening night is tomorrow, and it's running through Saturday. The student government's elections are kicking off next week, so you're going to see like a lot of posters and campaigning, and students will vote for their favorite candidates on April 5th. Also, next Wednesday is the junior, the junior class will have their state mandated SAT in school, so I have that to look forward to. And in honor of Board Appreciation Month, I would also like to give my thanks to everyone, and the last few months, I've gone to see how much time and effort goes into making every single one of these decisions. So and I'm sure there's even more going on behind the scenes. So I think I can speak for all Darren Public School students when I say we really appreciate everything that you do.
Thank you for saying that. We appreciate that, and thank you for the time and energy that you and John put into it, too. Much appreciated. We move on to the approval of the minutes. May I have a motion to approve the following minutes of the special meeting held on February 28th, 2023, and minutes of the regular meeting held on February 28th, 2023. Julie, second by John. All those in favor, it is unanimous for all of us that are here. We will go on to Board Committee Reports. There is a Ox Ridge Building Committee meeting tomorrow at 10 o'clock. I'll have more of an update next time, but that continues to stay on schedule and under budget, and we heard Dr. Adley talking about the hot lunches over there. We will actually see the gymnasium and the cafeteria and the music room structure on the tour on Saturday, so that will be exciting. It's looking good. I think, other than this last week, the weather has helped us, but we're on schedule for that school, fully open for the September school start.
HHR. HHR submitted their first bid package. You all may remember, we had an early bid package for some of the electrical equipment that has a very long lead time. Those have been approved by the state, and they're out. That's exciting for those at least. And then the second piece is we're finishing our construction drawings. Those should be finished by the end of the week, actually. They're going out for approval by our committee next Wednesday, and they'll be to you all at our March 28th meeting also for. Also exciting.
Sarah?
The Curriculum Committee Subcommittee has a meeting tomorrow morning at 8:30. We will be talking about science and music, so tune in.
Anyone else? Good. Thank you. We'll move on to Presentations and Discussions. Update on District Strategic Plan, Board Goals, Diversity, Equity, Inclusion. Dr. Adley and Dr. Tranberg.
If you don't mind, I will start with the Board Goals, and you've you have the memorandum, so I'm just going to touch on things very, very quickly unless any board members would like to bring any discussion about any item. Board Goal Number One, evaluating and maximizing safety and security practices for students and staff. Command the Board and the District for the work that is done and the support of the community where we are right now. And we have an update on executive session on school security, and I think we're in a good place. We've done the steps that we said that we're going to do. Our SSOs anticipate starting in April 19th. We're pleased that we're going to be able to place the six SSOs simultaneously. The hiring process, Leon has worked well with with margin coordinate, not to make sure that we can get everybody to start at the same time, so that's very helpful, but we have our Dr. Alicia Dad starts on Monday, so those 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 positions have been filled, and we're making, I feel we're making, and the board has made tremendous progress with goal, goal number one. I actually started to talk about goal number two, too, which is as much the same around the SEL and around mental health. Dr. Dad will commence again on Monday and also also have outreach to our community on the end of April. The high school will also be having a Wellness Week and also be sponsoring the Darkness Campus one, April 30th, to raise funds for suicide prevention and raise awareness and reduce the stigma. So they continue to to work on supporting our students in our mental health area. I can pause as I go, or I can just keep going.
We'll pause after each goal. Julie?
Thank you. Dr. Adley, can you give a little more color on the mental health and SEL presentation for families, district-wide or specific to?
So.
Being formed?
It was, it is still being formed because Monday, Dr. Dad arrived, so we'll have to do that in collaboration with her. At this point, we're anticipating, it could be different, but at this point, we're anticipating it being K through 12 opportunity, and we would likely dovetail that with the presentation, with her presentation, mental health stroke SEL. And so give people an opportunity, if you have questions around that, to to come to that particular presentation.
And ruler as well would be?
Well, that would be part of SEL.
For the SEL. Okay. Thank you.
Sarah?
I'm questioning the mental health updates scheduled for March 28th. I would assume that Dr. Dad would be a part of that, but she will only have been here for eight days. Is that, should we push that on?
I think she would appreciate that. I certainly, I certainly put that on because it was on there. I think it would be probably.
We can have that in our agenda conversation. Good point. Thank you. Give her a few more extra days. Goal three?
Okay, so oversee the implementation of the strategic plan. Sort of the, one of the updates here I have is sort of the discussion about the early adoption of of board goals to be, because it ties directly to the strategic plan, so that's something that we have to discuss, and I think we're sort of, we sort of have discussed it to bring that forward, hopefully, maybe at the end of June. And the most recent one is that the Board, the Board Adapted Budget aligns to the strategic, excuse me, the strategic plan and supports it.
I'll pause for a moment before I go to four.
So enhance the Board and District.
So Alan, you know, this is more an update on what's occurred, but in terms of the strategic plan itself, you know, there are board goals which are a separate entity from the strat plan. Do you have any intention of taking a look at strat plan?
Well, Chris is going to update as part of, as part of that.
Great.
Part of his update here.
Thank you.
And certainly if the Board wants to be directing that in, add something in that we would like to modify something or have that discussion. Yes, we can put that in. You can add that in actually, you can add that tonight if you wish.
Yes.
The Board and District Communication, so the the work of the Communication Committee has been up and running. We're ready. This will be sent out to you before they close this week, the survey for board members. And it's fairly straightforward for board members, so you'll be asked to record where, there'll be examples for you, but you're just asked to record anything that you think the board members do in a, in the way of communication, and it can just be raw data for for the moment. We did submit written testimony, written and in-person testimony to state legislators. And we're researching the actual communication survey plan. I would say up top, something I would like us to do a wee bit more of, or like, for instance, celebrate student and and staff achievements. We do, I'd like to elevate that if I could in some way. I think we could do, we can improve even more on that, that there's areas here that we haven't discussed. Administration, for instance, discussed the Power of Moments book by the Heath Brothers, and they have been celebrating and recognizing staff throughout the year in different ways. Retirement parties has been sort of changed and elevated a little bit, but I think there's other things we could do, like I'll, I'll put this on myself. I still would like to see Teacher of the Year, Paraprofession of the Year, more recognitions, just just of the teaching staff and of teaching and learning. And so I think that's an area where I would, I would want to look at and continue to see if we can find ways to celebrate both adults and students. And the Policy Committee did identify policies and procedures to support and enhance district communications. That's just start, that's just sort of ongoing. An example of that might be the inspection of of materials, the policy, right? Because that's an open transparent process then. So the work on that sort of will will kick in pretty rapidly here.
Tara?
So I just had a question about the idea of like Teacher of the Year and things like that, recognition, and not that I'm against recognizing, but we don't recognize students. We've gotten rid of honor roll and all of that long time ago. So you know, if we're going to recognize teachers, why don't we recognize students? I don't know.
No, did you say we don't recognize students?
Yeah.
We do recognize students.
We do?
Yeah.
Because I haven't seen an honor roll in years.
Well, that's not the only way we recognize them, though.
Okay. So, okay, so can you explain to me how we recognize them then?
Well, one example is we, throughout the year, we, or sorry, at the end of the year, we have a a recognition ceremony for for students.
You mean graduation?
No, I mean. An award ceremony where we recognize students for academic performance, club performance, participation.
That is specific to the high school.
Yes. Oh, yes, yes, yes.
So maybe to your point, Tara, as you flesh out.
The middle school doesn't, well, they do an award ceremony, but it's not, it's not academic based at all. It's.
An award ceremony is not academic based?
Not at all. No.
Well, okay, well, they do send middle school.
So maybe as you, as you flesh out, I think it's a good, as you flesh out kind of awards and honors, maybe an update to the Board on what we actually do at the high school, at the middle school, and the elementary school.
So there's other ways of doing it, though. I mean, you could have like students in the spotlight here. That was profiles, what they do and how they're doing things. There's different ways of, it's not just a ceremony. I think, I just think that there's ways that we could celebrate teaching and learning and our students and our staff.
When we talked about adding this as part of our Board Board Goal, but we talked about how this was not going to be just for academics, like this was to celebrate achievements of music, of being a nice person, being a good citizen. This was not, you know, not just honor roll, like that was more a broad achievement, even if it's like, I opened the door for a person. That's like, how do we, how do we a culture of recognizing good human beings?
That is the summary of the Board Goals.
Okay, good. Thank you. We'll move on to Mr. Dr. Tranberg.
Good evening, everyone. I'll provide my goals as well, just a couple of highlights of each of the goals of the strategic plan. And I'll start at the top with, we're finalizing the Teaching and Learning Principles. That is been taken on largely by our Professional Development and Evaluation Committee, the PDEC. So those are drafted. We just have one more round to go through with trying to find some language of what are some identifiable things we would look for in classrooms to align with those principles, and that will be completed by the end of this year. And also our transition from Google Docs into Edge of Planet. We have made a lot of progress. So the plan is for four years. I'm optimistic that we will get everything done faster than four years. But we have a four-year plan for every department, and we are moving through that and providing professional development to departments as they're ready to to make that transition. I'll pause there.
Tara, Katie, sorry.
Thank you. Chris, just one question for you. The third bullet mentioning that ELP has been working with Literacy How, developing language and poems and nursery grant. I'm just curious about that. Anecdotally, I've been hearing that Literacy How really hasn't had a presence in ELP and Darian for a while. So can you just expand a little on what that is and how it's happening?
That was a fair to Shirley for that.
Yes, it began three years ago. Laura wrote a grant. We started with Margie Gillis. That first year, there is a, one of Margie Gillis's colleagues comes in and works with the teachers in real time and working on the different goals that they've looked at in terms of literacy.
That's actually happening this year?
Yes. She's been on board this year. Not Margie, her colleagues. Yes.
Move on to two.
Sure.
For Professional Development, we've had a partnership with Responsive Classroom for several years, so we are continuing with that training. Andy Duses, whose name appears a few times, has been incredibly successful and well-received by teachers. So in addition to classroom teachers, he's also working with paraprofessionals this week during conferences, and he's worked with our special area teachers as well, and that's been wonderful. Our DEI team met on Monday of this week. We have a meeting coming, our April meeting. We're going, I'm going to meet separately with each group, and then we have our final meeting in May, at which time we're going to finalize our report and presentation that will be made to the Board on June 13th with recommendations from the year and a half of work that they completed.
I can answer. Chris, I think we're just on goal two. Heading to goal three, correct?
Yes.
All right, but we'll pause at goal two. Questions, comments, John?
So they completed the equity audit, so there's four areas that they're making recommendations as related to achievement, climate, professional capacity and program participation. So each group will have a few recommendations. I think we're calling them, like we did with the gifted evaluation, we'll probably call them considerations. So we did combinations and considerations, because then it becomes a board and administrative task.
These were.
Yes. For goal three, this is largely related to Portrait of the Graduate. The the biggest piece of work is actually coming as part of our administrative retreat in June. We have the language that's been developed at the secondary level. That's what's published in the strategic plan at the end, working on parallel language for elementary. And then the important piece is, well, how do you measure and assure that students have fulfilled the competencies of the vision of the graduate? So that's the work of our retreat coming up, and we've also integrated those conversations in our regular administrative meetings throughout the year.
Anything on Portrait of the Graduate, goal three?
I was just going to say, I loved the mention of the core competencies being represented in the Genius Hour projects at Middlesex, and when we get an update on on Genius Hour, I'd love to hear more about that.
Yes, and all of those competencies are also built into the Edge of Planet platform. They customize that for us, so we can make connections to our curriculum with all the competencies of the vision of the graduate.
When the update of the Genius Hour, can we also get not obviously the kids' names, but a list of all the projects that are being done?
For Professional Capacity of Staff, I'll point out Marge and tandem with the DEA are going to meet with first and second year teachers as they did last year. It was a really helpful exercise to go through because we are, we're very good at asking our our new teachers what they think after they have their new teacher orientation and onboarding, and they're very excited to say everything was wonderful, and they gave us some revised feedback of what they might, what might have helped them be more prepared. So we'll continue that practice because of it was very informative for us, and we made some adjustments to our onboarding as a result of that. Additionally, I'll point out that the CT Sets piece has been a major lift, and everyone has been wonderful in navigating that new platform and working together. And so we've tried to give teachers and administrators as much time as possible to to navigate that as smoothly as possible. And we also have our next PDEC meeting. We have a special guest, Jocelyn Delancey. You might remember that name. She is on the State Committee. There aren't very many people that are on that committee that redesigned the the new feedback system, so she's presenting to our PDEC in April. So we should have a draft in the fall of what the new system will look like, and we're anticipating it'll be another year of a waiver using the current system that we're on.
Any questions on that call? Chris, can you disqualify the rollout of CT Sets? I understand it was actually a little bumpy.
Oh, it's. I'll certainly let Shirley, but from my perspective, it's absolutely been bumpy across the state, but the way that we have managed the bumpiness, when I talk to my other colleagues, has been impressive.
That's the feedback we're getting also. We are leaders in it. We're approaching it, understanding what a challenge it is enthusiastically. Everyone is is working as hard as they can and dancing as fast as they can. We've trained all different levels. We're actually in the process of doing a beginning training and intermediate now for our administrators as well. So I think we've, we've realized, we've embraced it, we're working through it. We're giving staff the time they need to do it because we spoke earlier this year, it really can go from 20 minutes to two hours, and we get better as we go. And I think the staff will tell you that. I don't want to diminish how hard everyone is working, because that's how hard everyone is working. But we're making progress, and we'll continue to.
I'd also say it stressed the system and stressed our staff. I mean, let me just be clear about that, right? We are given the time. We're trying to be responsive. They're doing humans' work, but there's no doubt that this was stressful and learning experience. It's a tremendous job, but 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 I just don't want to minimize either, just just the stress I put on the system.
We actually kind of set up a hub in our own office that we're like the phone, you know, phone a friend. People call in all day long to work with our support staff in our office here. A lot of the errors that happened, the state's working on these glitches, but there are new glitches that come up. Goals come out of order. They're there, but they show up differently in different formats. There's an IP to glance. There's another format to it. So as we're learning as we go, we have a great deal of support staff helping our colleagues.
Thank you. And given that this topic is expanding the professional capacity of staff, we may not be there yet, but is there an opportunity within, while while rolling it out, it's been, again, it's been bumpy. Are there opportunities potentially to streamline down the line that we see coming?
Certainly. Why don't we get better as we go? Because we learn the operations as we did with IP Direct, and also the state is improving a lot of the aspects of the system.
Okay. Over and above just the kind of smoothing out the data entry, is there anything that the system is providing to us that would, that we didn't have before in terms of how we run our operations?
The parent portal is very friendly, so you can see it in real time, so parents have access to a portal so they can read the IP and get all their information through that. I think that's improvement. The actual format is improved, the friendliness of the document is improved, and it's much clearer. Prior written notice is a separate document, which really does inform the family in a very clear and precise way, as are the comments in the minutes. So I think the setup of it, once it is more operable, will really enhance the communication between family and school.
Okay. Chris, going forward, one more comment. I just would love for us to look at this goal, because we do have a lot of professional development, and we see it kind of peppered in here, but just making sure we do capture the universe of the PD we're doing. And sometimes, you know, when you've got that, we've talked a lot during the budget season about the, you know, R and D and where that shows up, and you know, I know sometimes it leads to main to other goals, but where it's relevant to this goal, I think there's quite a bit going on, and I know you're trying to roll it up and present to the board, but.
In the spirit of that, if I may just answer, in the RBT. In the spirit of that, if I may just answer, in the RBT training also, we're trying to train our in-house people to be trainers. So we don't have to go to CS or to other communities. So we're asking many of our own colleagues to become trainers.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yeah, good.
Under goal five, communications, we've convened the Elementary Progress Report Card Committee. That is partially a result of the DEA teacher negotiations. So as the committee was going to be formed, it fits under the school because progress reports are a significant communication to all the families. And we really want to make sure that the progress reports are well aligned with the elementary standards that are being taught. So that is underway. And the Board of Ed Communications Committee has met several times. They're in the process of, for the lack of a better word, I know we don't love the word audit, but auditing our communications that we have across the district to try to make sure we have a comprehensive understanding of what communications are out there, where there might be some gaps and how we can make for more effective communication. I'll pause there.
Joe.
So that first bullet, what are the drivers for? Is it just alignment?
Yeah. So then the number one driver would be the actual standards for each grade level. The standards are, that language is very misaligned from the actual standards that are currently in place. So I don't, I'm not quite sure of the last year that they were updated, but I think it was, had to be close to a couple of decades, I would guess.
The standards?
The the current progress reports. So there's been a significant change in curriculum and the progress reports have not followed up with the change. They look pre-common course, the way they read, so it's been a while.
Thank you, Sarah.
And question about when you think you might be coming, like exactly, are we hoping for next school year or no?
That would be, I think that would be too aggressive. Once those, once that's done, there'll be several presentations. And also there's a significant technology side of that in building a new progress report within Aspen. So at least another school year out.
Do you have a recommendation or best practices on the timeline of when progress reports should be reviewed?
As far as this is what we do right now.
This one seems like it'd have been a really long time since we had done it. So what, what would we be looking for after this one is in place? When would we look to reassess again?
In general, I don't think that you need to overhaul an entire progress report at once. There are times, all standards don't change at once. So if we have a new social studies framework that comes from the state, there's no reason why we shouldn't press pause and say, are we aligned or are we not aligned? It should change whenever that happens.
Do you see it being more of an ongoing process in the future? Thank you.
The security aspect of communication is going to be important over the next, I don't know, two, one to three months. So I don't see that here, but and I don't know if that's too granular, but I would certainly add that.
Yes, thank you. And I'll also add to Ms. McHemus' earlier comment about just looking at the strategic plan in general. We had discussed at an earlier meeting, perhaps not waiting until the retreat to do that because it's a bit late, but considering an additional meeting sometime in the spring or to do it during a regular meeting. So that's, that just needs to be discussed with you. Now move on to goal six. I know we've already talked about HHR and Ox Ridge. Those are just two or really exciting things that are happening. So I wanted to name those again. And other than that, your, these are very current updates, so I won't belabor this one.
Just, I would add the track, pretty big one. Once that's officially approved by the RTM, tons way.
That's a good one. Thank you. And under goal seven, we do another type of security, always looking to improve our security of our infrastructure. And so there's been cyber cybersecurity training and we have a new email filtering system that is in place as of last week. And also pointing out that we are looking into how we're going to make our redesign of the tech department, working with this coordinator position. So that is underway as well.
Sorry, one other add back in the, in the last one is the auditorium too as well. Pretty.
Yeah, Captain.
Thank you.
Sorry.
I'd like to go back then to Ms.
So I just wanted Laura straight reached out to me, but to Katie's question earlier, there've been two workshops thus far. The next workshop from Literacy How is on March 24th, not the 17th, just to give some more information to the board.
Thank you. All right, AP, Presentation and Possible Approval of International Trips for 2024. Dr. Fran Berg, Ms. Malicio and Mr. Chansko, please.
I will turn it over to Christina and Frances.
I have a time. I'm so excited about these trips again, so.
I just came back from our Galapagos pre-departure meeting at the high school. So we're leaving in 24 days. It's gonna be awesome. So tonight, Frances and I will be presenting the World Language and English trip, trips for 2024. And I will start with my presentation and then introduce Frances, who will do his. And then we'll both be available to answer questions at the end. Because we're both traveling with EF, a lot of it is, oh, thank you, a lot of it is the same. The agenda for tonight, some of you may recognize this because it's very similar to the previous times that I've done this. But I've included information about our program development and our EF partnership and safety on tour in here so that you can look at it if you want to. But I'm going to skip ahead to safety and then continue on with itineraries, if that's okay. If you have questions about anything in the previous slides, you can ask afterwards. So program development, I'm going to skip through what students gain from educational travel, which we all know. Education First and our partnership, it's the company that we travel with and safety. Safety obviously is our number one priority. Whenever we travel on an EF tour, we have a dedicated personal tour director on location. They meet us at the airport. They say goodbye to us when we get on the plane home. The Education First as a company has a peace of mind and global travel protection program that covers us the entire time while we're there. And it's one of the main reasons that we chose to partner with them three years ago when we started this because they support our district policies and are, and are very similar to what we do. So the first trip I am presenting is the Spanish language immersion trip, which is nine days to Argentina and Iguazu Falls over April break of 2024. On the first day, we arrive in Buenos Aires and we spend three days exploring the city. What the city of Buenos Aires, I equate it to New York City in the sense that it's very large, a lot of different neighborhoods, different foods, a confluence of culture. You could spend a year in the city alone and not see everything that you'd want to see. So we spent three days exploring the city monuments, markets, all the different neighborhoods. We then go on to Colonia de Sacramento in Uruguay. And this is, we actually get on a boat and we cross the river plate to see this Spanish colony. So students can see traditional colonial architecture from the Spanish colonization. And then we're back in Buenos Aires for a day before we go to the border of Argentina and Brazil to visit Iguazu Falls. And we spend a day there. There is more, I could go on and on about what we're going to do and the highlights, but that's in the detailed itinerary, which is in the packet that I provided for everyone. I'm most excited about the pink house, which is the White House in Argentina, but there's this pink, so. May or may not be why I'm wearing my pink jacket. The next trip, which is also over April break of 2024, is a trip to France. And to back up for a second, we've come up with these three locations after asking for feedback on locations to all students in the DHS community. Over the years, there've been, there's been a lot of interest in a trip to France for our students that study French. And it's the perfect opportunity because springtime in France is absolutely beautiful. We, this trip is 12 days. It starts in the French Riviera before it makes its way north through Provence and the lavender fields of Provence, north to Lyon, the culinary capital of France. Some may say it's Paris, but it's actually Lyon. And then up to the Loire Valley to see all the châteaux and the gardens. And you basically can't do this type of trip in France without visiting that area and then moving on for a two-night stay in Paris before going to Normandy and seeing the deep, the area where the Allies landed on D-Day on Normandy Beach, which is really special, a really special extension that we've added on to this trip. And again, I could say so much about this trip alone, but it's in the detailed itinerary, the stops and the excursions and all the extra things that the students will be doing. So two separate trips, two different languages over April break. And then the last one, similar to the summer trips that we've been planning in summer of 2022, students went to Germany and Switzerland. This summer, they're going to Italy. And then next summer, there's an opportunity to go on a specialized STEM trip to London and Stonehenge. And the purpose of this trip, just to give you some color on this one, students are exploring the inner workings of London's principal monuments and buildings. They visit Stonehenge, they study with researchers at the Royal Observatory. It's a real hands-on experience for students that are particularly interested in architecture, applied sciences, astronomy, and of course, engineering. And all of the, the, the students that travel on this trip actually get expert-led tours and do research with people that work in them. And like in Big Ben, you actually go up to the clock tower and you see how the, again, there's all this is in me is in the board packet. But it's open to all students. This trip is open to all students at DHS, rising sophomores, juniors and seniors. And it, in particular, in particular, interesting to students that are interested in science, engineering and architecture. And accommodations and meals and then what's included and what's not. So this would also apply to, similar to the safety information, this also applies to Frances's presentation. So I'll, I'll do it here just in the interest of time. The hotels are centrally located, they're safe, three and four stars, wifi. And the meals on tour are intended for students to eat as locals would. Breakfast and dinner are included. And lunchtime is really an opportunity for students to travel through the location where we're in to explore food that they would like to try with their tour guides, with the group. And yeah, that's, that's pretty much it as far as accommodations and meals. I could answer questions if someone has them, but those are like the broad strokes. And then what's included and what's not. So I've included here the prices of our trips. But as far as what's included and what's not is also similar to what Frances will be presenting later. We should view these trips as all-inclusive in the sense that they include airfare, breakfast and lunch, breakfast and dinner, I'm sorry. All travel, once we arrive, access to our tour director, the traveler support team back in the United States, all of the expert-led tours, all the activities, all of the project-based learning, everything that happens on tour is included. And then what's not is up there. If there's a passport fee, ground travel to the airport, lunches and snacks. If you apply for the college credit, the global travel protection, which can be added later. But that's pretty much it. So Argentina, France and STEM in London. And that's all for me.
Feel like giving you a round of applause.
No, it's not, it's not for me, I like to talk.
Thank you. I too love to talk, but I've been instructed by our instructional leader to keep it short. And that's going to be very important when we get to our, our second slide in a minute. What's happening here? Oh, we're going through everything?
Yeah.
Looking for my slides. I'll begin by saying, so I'm presenting to you, I'm proposing to you a similar international trip called Literature in England. It goes without saying that the reason I'm here tonight is because of the person next to me because they say that imitation is a serious form of flattery. Well, we are imitating not exactly the locations of the world language trips. But, you know, we wouldn't have this idea if not for Christina and the great work that they've been doing in, in world languages. Basically, it's the same tour organization, EF, Education First. Everything that Christina has already presented is a part of basically the structure of this trip. I was so amazed by all the great trips that you've approved and that they've already done and that is already in the pipeline. I was just curious to see if there was something that connected to English. And lo and behold, there's something called Literature in England. It didn't take much doing to get some of our teachers on board with this idea. And then we did a survey, so we have a number of students that are interested in this trip. So we know that the students are out there. So we feel really good about this and proposing it to you tonight. Our trip is the, is destined for April of 2024, 2024, just as a couple of Christina's trips are as well. So I have this wonderful poem that I brought to you, but in the name of time. And just say, I feel defeated in my secret dream was to have a poetry explication breakout here at the Board of Ed for the first time ever. But suffice it to say, we'll get rolling through it. I did, you know, this is the kind of thing that old English teachers do. They bring a small poem at the beginning of a class, establishing a theme for the lesson.
Frances, I just want to point out that the number of words you use to describe why you didn't read it, you could have read.
Fair enough. I'll, I'll leave it. Obviously, William Wordsworth is one of the authors, one of the poets that our, our students would visit, one of the places that he made famous in England, and I'll leave it at that. So these are the primary destinations for the trip. And I want to just emphasize that the plan for the first year would be to do the book trip and use the standard itinerary that has been designed by EF. Later on, having done it once, we might decide, hey, you know what? This wasn't the most effective place and we want to make some revisions. That costs a little bit more, so we decided for this first time to go with the standard book itinerary. So I'll get to the authors in just a moment, but I'll just say that we start with a two-day stay at the Lake District, which is a national park in England, is made famous by British romantic poets. We move on to Yorkshire, which we'll get to the famous authors that are known for their work there in just a moment. Stratford upon Avon would be day four. Day five is Oxford. I'll get to the reason why that's been added to the trip as well. Day six is Bath and we finish with a two days, really two and a half days in London. The authors, and these are folks that we read in our curriculum. So the Lake District is made famous by the British romantic poets. To the left is a very young William Wordsworth and his esteemed colleague Samuel Taylor Coleridge is to his right. And we'll learn a lot more about those poets, having visited their, you know, the location of many of their poetry poems. Day three, we have in Yorkshire, that's made famous by the Bronte sisters. We're familiar with two of them. The one to your right is Charlotte. She wrote Jane Eyre. That's something that we read at the high school. To your left is Emily Bronte. In the middle, we don't really know much about. We don't really read Anne Bronte, but she's the third Bronte sister who is also a writer as well. Day four is all things Shakespeare. We will see his birthplace. We will see one of the places that he went for his elementary schooling. We'll see Anne Hathaway, wife's cottage. We will see his burial place. So it's a great little town. I've been there myself before because we, English teachers like to nerd out and go on these trips on our own. Day five, basically, I had a hard time figuring out exactly what, what the reason was for going to Oxford. And I was able to unearth that we will spend some time at New College where a lot of scenes from the Harry Potter movies were filmed. And it looks like that's the so-called literary connection that we have on that day. So I'll just feature that. I'm sure. I'm sure it will be heartbreaking for me to come back from this trip, let's say with our kids and have that be the featured memory of the trip. But anyway, who knows? Bath is made famous not only for the, for the Roman baths, and that's why it's called Bath, but for Mary Shelley on our left, who is the author of Frankenstein that we read in honors, in honors English 10 and Jane Austen to the right. Finally, we wind up in London. I have depicted there Charles Dickens and Virginia Woolf. We read them. They're very famous for their stories set in London. We will also see the Globe Theatre or the reconstructed Globe Theatre, which is amazing. We will see a production there and we also have a workshop performed by actors for the students there. So I find it, I think it's a tremendous trip. Here are the ways in which it really gets at a lot of the works that we do in the curriculum already, right? So it won't really take much to put, you know, to make connections with the kids that go on the trip in terms of where we're, what we're learning about. I feel like this is sort of, you know, just doing exactly what Christina did. So I'm thankful that she went over all the bells and whistles that come with EF trips earlier. You can see the price, you can see what comes with it, you can see what doesn't come with it. It's virtually the exact same as all of her trips and pretty much I feel like everything I'm doing is really much the exact same, always the English version. I've looked a little more into the EF catalog and there isn't really, I don't expect that we're going to be, you know, coming up with a lot of trips like this every year. I think this is something that we would like to do and like to offer our kids, but I don't see as much on there as there are, let's say, for world language and world culture. But I'm very excited about this. Our, our teachers are very excited about this opportunity for our kids and the kids that we've already talked about this idea with are also very excited as well. So at this point, I will resist the urge to go back to that poem. And if you have any questions you'd like to ask.
You can read it. You can read us the poem. Please do.
Traveling. This is the spot. How mildly does the sun shine in between the fading leaves? The air in the habitual silence of this wood is more than silent. And this bed of heath, where shall we find so sweet a resting place? Come, let me see thee sink into a dream of quiet thoughts. Protracted till thine eye be calm as water, when the winds are gone and no one can tell whither. My sweet friend, we too have had such happy hours together that my heart melts in me to think of it. So the real purpose of this is that what we see is an environment that is having a major effect in shaping the mood and the dreams and the imagination of the speaker of the poem and the sweet friend and then the reader. So it's really the same experience we're looking to give our kids, putting them in environments where these poets and writers crafted these great works, so they too can feel in that location, the mood and the dreams and the imagination that those writers felt as well. That's the purpose of that poem.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Just quickly, I don't remember, are these open to all grades?
Ten through twelve.
Ten through twelve. Okay, thanks.
Just question about travel insurance. It's an add-on, right? It's not a requirement? Is it, is there any thought to maybe requiring travel insurance? I'm just thinking, you have got to provide there's a medical emergency or whatever.
So there is, traveling with EF comes with their basic travel insurance plan. The one that you can purchase after is an enhanced policy. And we also, like students are covered by their insurance and also with us. Julie.
Thank you. These are amazing. I'm available for all of them, which is going to be hard because they're happening at the same time, a lot of them. But that's a lead into my question, which is, do we have any concern about being able to find enough chaperones? Now, there are only so many vacations to spend your vacation with your students. Okay, that's great.
I have a waiting list.
Okay, love it.
So no, I don't, I don't think we'll have.
Is there concern about enough students to do all three or?
We just need a minimum of six to run the trip. So if there would be an issue if there were fewer, but no.
So I have two questions for you, Christina. The first one, the first one is STEM in England. I love the concept, but why is that coming out of your department?
We, in our original proposal in 2021, we said that we would like to offer a trip that was open to all students at the high school, so that it wasn't just exclusive to the world language department. So very similar to what happened with Francis. I would have loved to run a literature in England trip. I'd be happy to do all the logistical work, but that's Francis, like, that's a great idea. So very similar to the STEM trip, we're offering it so that more students can have that opportunity. It's not exclusive to, oh, if you don't take a world language, but you like STEM, you can't go on it. It's, it's open to everyone. Yeah.
Okay. And then do we, is there a reason why you're changing some of the trips? You know, why are we not repeating Galapagos, for example?
Oh, so that's so that the students that are, because we have several repeat travelers on Galapagos right now that went to Spain. So we're going through three different locations so that the students that went on them will either have already had that experience or will have graduated.
Okay.
Is there oversubscription where, on any of these trips where you have to prioritize kids that haven't, students that haven't gone yet or?
No, the cap is at sixty.
Okay, so big.
So it's, it's pretty high. Yeah, it's pretty high.
So are you going to Argentina or France?
I don't know. I'll call on myself and I'll go on both. I'm, I'm not sure on which one I will go, but the person who is leading, who's listed as the leader of that trip, traveled to Germany and Switzerland with students in the summer. So whether it's me or her as the lead person, yeah, I don't, I can't decide. I don't know.
Any other questions? So are we ready to approve these or not? Okay. They have a motion to approve the proposed international trips to Argentina, April 2024, France, April 2024, and STEM in England, summer 2024. Julie, seconded by Tara. All those in favor? That's unanimous. Second motion, may I have a motion to approve the proposed international trip, Literature in England, April 2024? Katie, seconded by John. All those in favor? That's unanimous.
Thank you both very much.
Thank you both very, very much. I can't say I'm happy about these things. Troy, how are you going? Special privilege.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, guys.
That will move on to the annual review and possible action on extending the term of the reciprocal agreement for the use of facilities with the YMCA.
So we're currently in the second year of the agreement. It has worked out very well. The district has saved over $76,000 since its implementation. We did reach out to Jennifer Garner, the YMCA Darian CEO, and she's thrilled with the agreement. The communication between both sides has drastically improved in terms of cancellations, if there are any on their side. So we strongly recommend extending the agreement.
Any questions?
There been any shifts in expenses on either side that would cause you to want to renegotiate anything? Clearly, this is a proposal, I'm guessing, not material or anything.
Not really. We kind of benchmarked about 2,900 hours and they've been, you know, just shy of that. So not really.
Okay, perfect. This has worked out really well. Good work.
They have a motion to extend the reciprocal agreement on the use of facilities with the YMCA for the 2023-2024 school year. John, seconded by Tara. All those in favor? That's unanimous.
All right, the next agenda item, discussion and reflection on fiscal year 24 Board of Education budget process. I'll kick this off by Duke queued it up a little bit in the chair report. We're just looking to identify tonight some areas that we might want to think about. This is not meant to be a problem solving or problem or issue or opportunity identification. So if there's some area where we want to improve or something that we think we could take advantage of, this is the night to identify it. Of course, it'll be an ongoing discussion. So if there are things we missed tonight, you know, we, we're just trying to open the box. It will be after tonight, we'll wrap it up and summarize it, send it over to the facilities committee for them to kick it around and come back to us.
Finance.
Finance, thank you.
Like do that all the time.
So I just for, for ease of discussion, I was thinking about, I think we maybe want to sort of think about the budget process in three different chunks. The first is the chunk leading up to the actual budget arriving at our doorstep. The second is while we sit and deliberate it. And the third is when it leaves our hands and it goes to the board of finance and or the RTM. So as we're just talking about the budget, just to think of those different, those chunks differently. If you have a concern, try to fit it within a phase. So, you know, no surprise to anybody here. One of the things that I would be most interested in is looking at that phase one, when we actually create our goals and objectives, how the strategic plan aligns with how we operationalize what we want to do and then tie those to financial goals and then provide guidance to the superintendent as he, you know, continues with the budget work. There's not really a clean handoff. So that's an area where, you know, I'm interested in us looking at our portion of the process in terms of timing and what type of information we turn around. But I'll open the floor.
Well, and I just dovetail your, your comments, you know, the programmatic elements and whether or not, you know, we have to, you know, make a decision whether or not to get briefed on a program before the budget process. So, you know, I think you basically covered that, but you're just taking a step back and reevaluating it. This was my fourth year in the budget process. I mean, I think it went quite well and, you know, it was a great partnership and we got a lot of feedback. But the timing of the feedback seems a little disjointed in terms of the roles and responsibilities of each, you know, between the Board of Education, the Board of Finance, then the RTM. And I did listen to the OPC meeting where they covered this subject a bit and also the Education Committee discussion, I guess, earlier this week. So, you know, I think Duke touched upon some of it because, I mean, there's this distinct responsibility is laid out by the state statute that we're the governing body, the statutory authority to actually place the line items from the appropriation, from the appropriating body, which I believe in this town is ultimately the RTM. You know, so when we go through the budget line item by line item, it's very important in understanding it. And I'm not discounting the RTM's role or the Board of Finance's role, but they don't have that authority. They have the authority to appropriate certain dollars. And actually, I think this is going to be helpful, having experience on the RTM F and D for one year, four years on the RTM. And you were, how many years on the RTM? Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were RTM, but anyway. Okay, so some of us have experience on, on RTM and understanding, you know, what, what its role is. But, you know, Duke touched upon it. You know, we got a lot of questions before from our partners, if you will, in government and then some other interested parties in terms of before the Board of Ed even weighed in on the superintendent's budget. And so a lot of the questions would immediately go to the staff, administration and cabinet and create a lot of work. And so I think there's going to be a better way that we can kind of structure the, the adoption, I'm sorry, the presentation of the superintendent budget, allow the Board of Education to do its work, work with its staff and maybe kind of filter some of the questions or time some of the questions better. So we don't have, I mean, I think we probably had well over 200 questions when it was said and done between the Board of Ed and then the partners. And I think it just becomes unwieldy. So looking for a way to get, get the input, but at the right time from the partners. I think that's going to be really important. We don't want this to be exclusionary, but we want to make sure that we have the order of operation so we can be most productive in, in, in producing a Board of Ed adopted budget. And then we, of course, we hand it to the Board of Finance and then ultimately the RTM, which acts mostly as a referendum body, as I understand it. You know, they can't increase their budget. They can't really move line items around, but they can definitely say no or reduce it. So kind of figure out that, figure out how to work with the committees. I know the RTM is actually currently discussing its proper committee roles and it's, it's interesting as outlined in the town charter, it's a little different than they've been operating. So it's going to be interesting to see how that all flushes out as well. So we have a lot of time, but it's, I'm looking forward to working with the committee and then the rest of you and kind of flushing this all out.
Anyone else?
Thank you. To kind of add on to what John was saying, I think another thing that gets difficult too is to continue to follow the information through the process, because we're going through our deliberations and you guys are in very short order, turning around responses to different bodies on different questions, on different topics. But, you know, an answer, if a question gets answered on.
Okay, come up with an example right now.
Snow removal. And someone else has asked a question as well, but it's a different question and they are now, those answers are in two different places. It's, I feel like we could all work together to find a way to streamline that. So everything has more of a central collecting spot. The other, a couple other thoughts that I had was, I would love for us as a board to, to figure out if we can be more, if we, if we can give more or better direction. For example, I felt like we got, we got the presentation of the recommended budget and it was decided that it needed to be brought down a certain amount or try to bring it down a certain amount. And did we not know that beforehand? Why didn't we know that until we saw a number? And could we have given more direction like that up ahead of time or should we have? And I, I'm not saying what the right answer is, but doing that is kind of giving a, here's the number you have to hit. And I think there's been discussion about not wanting to do that. So I think we need to have some conversation around how, how we want to do that and what we want to be doing there. And then the last piece I would throw out for now is just moving forward. I'd like us to work on, I feel like there were decisions being made through the budget that were probably decisions that would have been made in other ways. And it might have been timing and circumstance that drove that. But if there are departments that we want to consider reorganizing or if there are things that need optimizing, I would love to find ways to do that ahead of time. And oh my, if it turns up savings come budget time, that would be great to understand where those savings came from. But it, I don't want to let the budget drive the process.
Proactive versus kind of reactive, right?
So just a couple.
Sorry, there was one other point that came up when Duke, I don't know if Duke mentioned it, the five-year kind of forecast and kind of refining that and getting, you know, I think we have enough expertise to get a little better at just, not just straight lining things. Now, at our defense, we do talk about, hey, if we're going to add this FTE and, you know, foreign language, it's going to be adopted and add FTEs in the future. But I think we can be a little more transparent and a little more detailed on how we plan for that too.
Could I just say for that five year, just, just for clarity, we did do that. We played, we did do that with, some years ago, when I first got here, we did the five years with any personnel and we played it all out. And then the board decided like, we don't want to do the five year anymore. So making sure we're revisiting.
Yeah.
Same thing, which is fine if that's what we want to do again.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's been asked for and I think it also, again, as I think in this process, I mean, you know, maybe we get guidance, like true guidance, like, you know, from the fiscal authority in town in what their kind of overall goal is. And we get it, but it's kind of not straightforward and, and well in advance of, you know, the superintendent's preparation of the budget. You know, again, you know, I take personal responsibility of, you know, instructing the superintendent to, you know, find efficiencies after the presentation of his budget. So I think we can be proactive in this process.
More specific just to the budget and not the process so much, except for the fact that I just, and I've said it before, I would like to see us look at the athletic portion of it earlier because there was even questions coming out after. And I've had a couple of conversations and it just seems so muddy, like it's, the athletic budget is not transparent. And it's very unclear as to, you know, what buses we're paying for, some buses outside of Connecticut, you know, there's just, it's really.
So can we do that over a break again, you know?
Well, so I think for the purposes of tonight's discussion, thank you. That's a great example. I think there's a fourth stage, which is once we've identified things in the budget cycle that we didn't handle, we need to make sure that they actually get identified so that they end up on an agenda in a timely manner so that we can give them the appropriate level of, of exploration.
Maybe it's just a choice of words or something. I know you said that's a great example. I don't think, happen to think it's a great example of. great example, I don't think, happen to think it's a great example of transparency. Perhaps, maybe, maybe, maybe there are more questions to be answered and stuff, but I just would be cautious, because to our community, I think it's transparent, but if there's other things that needs to, transparent in the sense of it, it's out there, if there's other things that need to be answered, that's fine, I'm okay with it.
So I'm going to say we're going to table that discussion. Because I don't want to talk about athletics.
No, of course not.
It's not only you.
Anyone else, board, Swarta, or any members of the district, Sarah?
And so I think it's important, what John was saying about being proactive, and Julie as well, that first, being proactive versus reactive, like, a hundred percent agree with that. I am, and I've said this multiple times, I do not like creating a school budget based on guidance, not from educators. I think that's, I really struggle to have, you know, what if the Board of Finance says, or whatever governing body says, we need a one percent budget? That's just not possible. So I'm not saying that's going to happen. So I, we just need to be very clear about where our roles are, and if we don't like the guidance, and, and the superintendent says it's absolutely impossible, then we need to recognize that. So you could have guidance, but it does need to be taken with, with a grain of salt.
Okay, so point, point agreed. Yeah. I just don't want to talk, agreed, but let's put that as an item for them to kick around.
Yep.
No, I do agree with some things, not everything, to be clear, but I, let's punt it over to the finance committee to discuss the whole question of guidance. Yes, Alex?
So I think we should probably look, look at the calendar, everything from when we do the, for the schools, to when we get books, because the same questions come up every year. We have processes we got to do, so we should, if we have to back it even, even earlier, then we should do all that upfront and be very clear with, with that calendar. And actually, the calendar also addresses some of your other topics you discussed, John.
I mean, my goal is actually make your job as administrators easier. I mean, the amount of time those questions take is just unruly, and if we, again, like, it's our responsibility to ask the questions to you. I mean, I, I don't even have the authority to email Rich as a board member and ask him questions. So I think restructuring how the questions come in, how we filter them as a board, and then how we kind of develop them for the administration, I think is going to be really helpful in terms of time efficiency.
Anyone else? All right, so I'm just going to take a minute to repeat it, just if I missed anything, please give a holler. All right, so stage one is the development, which is, you know, the, looking at the timing of the creation and the development of goals and objectives, summer and early fall. And when I say goals and objectives, I also do mean strategic plan. That second part of budget development is direction to the superintendent. The components of that would be forecasting, if there's any kind of guidance. Of course, we're looking at the financial impact of operational goals coming out of the goals and objectives. And then I, I thought a fourth point is just responding to external changes. Sometimes we have, you know, things that we haven't planned for, we've experienced that quite a bit lately, so making sure we leave some responsiveness in there. Those would be the four components of.
And the fifth is Tara's, like, coming back to items that maybe, you know, issues that came up.
Yeah, that, those ideally should hit goals and objectives.
Okay.
Then the second component is board review, the two things we've identified during that, or the things we've identified during that process, is taking a look at the role of other town bodies, particularly vis a vis the questions that we take in, and how those get handled. And then the other component is looking at how we answer questions, making, being a little more, making sure there's a timeline, and we can follow the data, so that we're not pulling different papers together. Then, ah. The other, then the next piece is handoff, something that came, I'm sorry, took notes, I didn't say everything, something that came up is after handoff, but the level of border administrative support, so your attendance at meetings. Maybe we want to take back sort of the calendar, take a look at when the superintendent or the cabinet or the board are spending their time after the budget's been handed off from the board event. While we want to make sure that there's people around answering questions, sometimes it's a lot of time.
It is a lot of time, it's not just sometimes.
Yes. All right, I don't have proactivity here, so I'm adding that back under board review. Well, that's really before, actually. I'll send these out.
Yeah, I want to clean them up.
And then, lastly, there's the fourth stage, which is ensuring that there's follow-up after issues have been identified. I think that's it. I did speak to Dennis and Dave, who I knew wouldn't be here. Dennis also mentioned the calendar, so I'll add that to board review. And Dave mentioned picking up outstanding items from the previous year. Okay, so I'll clean that up and send it around, but is there anything glaring that we're missing? Okay. All right, thank you for that. Thank you to finance, all of you guys who will be taking it from here. Marge, personnel report.
No, so Dr. Adley was doing final interviews with the SSOs as the agenda was going out, so he has, as he said, two more to meet, they'll be on the next personnel report.
Thank you. If that will move to public comments. Anyone in the audience? Anyone else on the show?
There are no raised hands.
All right, may I, please have a motion for adjournment. Tara, seconded by Julie, all those in favor? Thank you very much, everybody have a good night.